Do you want to rock and roll? Okay. We have a special deal. The Boy Scouts came to honor for Flag Day and we're going to allow them to come in and lead the pledge for us. So if you'd roll call first, Russell.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Brye Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor FitzKelly?
Here.
Mayor McKay? Here. If we could please stand and the troops come in, the scouts come in, and line up in front here and we'll let you all lead the pledge. All right.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Weekend.
Yeah, yeah. Stay there, we'll come down and get a picture with you.
You guys want to kind of step up this way. First time Bob's stepped in too as well. If you would, come over to the side. Come over here guys, the shorter guys, come over here. Come on forward, come on forward. Okay. Attention. Listen to words. Come on. You guys gotta come front. The council probably will stand in the middle or... Yeah, it's probably the bad thing to do. Uh, probably you on the edge. You know what? This is working. This is where it takes me.
We don't have everybody else.
But I do need you to come closer, otherwise I gotta stand in the parking lot. You need to come out front. Yeah, uh, come, stand in front, there you go. You guys, good, everybody looks great. I got a spot. There, you first. Any other parents? Hop up.
Got some other scout leaders in the back there.
Well, they don't look beautiful for me. For sure.
Scout leaders.
Get the scout leaders up there.
Scout leaders. Come on up.
Good try though. All right. There we go. Now you gotta look at me. Three smiles. Anybody else? Thank you. All right. Good. Awesome. Thank you everyone. Thank you. Give me help. Thank you.
Don't worry about it.
What's next?
Would you mind taking that back then? You want that back for your cat, right?
Yeah. I'd like to thank all the residents who are coming out tonight. I greatly appreciate it. Those of you that know or don't know, we have two meetings a month, so anytime you feel or have the need to come see us or visit us, come out and see us. We're here twice a month, so, um... Is the pledge, what else we want to do here? Southwest Ranches Foundation Astronaut Presentation? Roll that podium back in the middle there, I think, Jordan. Aster, you getting ready or?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Council. The Astronaut Parks Foundation has been partnering with the town since the year 2009 to develop our parks and recreational facilities. To date, we have given the town over $113,000 to various projects in the town. We could not do this without your continued support, that of the sponsors for our fundraising events, and our staff list in December, Laurentano Haines. This foundation has become a very successful partnership. Leading charge is a truly dedicated and hard-working group of residents. I am frequently awed by the committed members of our board who work to continue the vision of developing our parks. These are Rick Bell, Christina Brownlow, Mary Gay Chapels, Dr. Dealer Franklin, Barbara Gonzalez, Joe Huppert, Barbara Lester, George Morris, Marie Nix, Karen Parkinson, Terry Mieres, and Winston Simmons. Tonight, it is with great pleasure that on behalf of my fellow directors, I present to you this check in the amount of $30,000 to help in the development of the Frontier Trails Park.
Awesome.
So, would you come down and have a...
Well, glad I come down for a picture for that.
And accept it.
Oh, it takes 30 grand. Let me move this out of my way.
I want to see you folded and put in your purse. Dee, I want to see you folded and put in your purse.
Next item is going to be the school advisory board, but we're waiting for someone in the parking lot to come in. Here she comes now. Good timing. Great timing, Kathy. You're up.
Always like the big entrance.
Awesome. Kathy is the Chair of the School Advisory Board, and that entire board has done a stupendous job raising money for scholarships for our kids and...
And we're timely.
Amazing. You all have done an amazing job. I personally thank you immensely, and I know the council does, and we'll let you speak and then we'll chat later. So, go ahead, I'll pass it off to you, dear.
Can I turn sideways and...
You can turn around. You can turn all the way around 180 degrees if you want. I mean, the board if you want.
Hi, thank you everybody that's here for the scholarship. This is probably my favorite time of year, Scholarship Day. It's very exciting for me. We work very hard all year long. I hope you remember that most of these kids that have applied for the scholarship, it's not their first year. They apply, they can apply several years in a row, and they put in 40 hours of community service in our neighborhood. And so they're rushing home on semester break, and they're coming home early, and they're taking the long weekends to get 40 hours in. And it's been a really fun year because I've got to know a lot of the kids this year as they came to me for community service. And to watch them grow and develop and kind of figure out what we're really about has been a lot of fun. And one of the young ladies said to me this year, she said that last year her favorite part was my little speech where I get up here and I talk about civic pride and community service and how proud I am of each of you. And she said she was really touched by it, but she wasn't sure she bought it. So, I had to think about that, and I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that the community service that these kids are doing, they're handing out 500 flyers in the neighborhood for the events that we have at the parks. They're stuffing 2,500 Easter eggs with candy. They're slicing watermelon at 4th of July. At the town parties, when you've had a great time and you go home, they're cleaning the tables and stacking the chairs and putting them away. They're showing up at midnight because it's the only time that they have away from school to set up the tables and chairs for the parties that we have the next day. And that's really been a lot of fun, and I got to thinking about it because of what she said, and I wanted to talk a minute, and I'll just be a minute.
Go right ahead.
I wanted to talk a minute about the ripple effect, because you guys out there might think you're just stacking chairs and tables and you're just handing out flyers, but it's so much more. And I looked at the history of our town and I thought about it, and you know, kind of our shining star of this town is our parks. We have a lot of grants and we raised a lot of money so that we have spectacular parks in the town of Southwest Ranches. But most of us have land, we have acreage, and that's our park. So what you're doing is you're bringing hundreds of thousands of people through our incredible parks that most of us in this room have worked so hard to make very special. It's a ripple effect. You're doing something. By handing out those 400 and 500 flyers, you brought somebody to the town parks that maybe wouldn't have been there. You brought somebody to an event that showed them that the town of Southwest Ranches is so much more than just people that live on acreage. It's something really special, and I don't want you to ever think that those 40 hours are not significant, because they are. It might feel like something little, it might feel like you sold tickets at the food truck event this year and you helped raise $1,600 towards your scholarship. That's not what happened. You sold food ti- truck, you sold food tickets at the food truck event this year and you've helped raise almost $100,000 in the last 10 years. You're part of something big and don't let anyone tell you you're not. So that's my speech.
Awesome. Thank you, Kathy.
So this is our check this year that we're so proud of, that all the young people here are going to get a part of, and that they, they worked very hard to get a part of. So, we're going to have this so that you can all take pictures with it, either up here with the council or out front, but first, let's, let's call everybody up here and maybe we can get a picture with you and a picture with the town council.
Do you want to explain, Kathy, just a minute about how it kind of works as far as getting their money back, turning in receipts, that kind of thing?
Do I want to talk more in the microphone?
We don't just hand you a check for $1,600.
We don't. So, the way that, we are not a true charity, we're a town, which, and it's written out in really legal language, but basically a town acts as a 501(c) P. See? They have the same tax structure, and that's why we can give away this money. However, we can't just hand you a check. It's a reimbursement. So what happens is you've read on your, on your application what you can be reimbursed for, and it's very wide. We made it that way on purpose because it's not $10,000 to each student. And so, you need school supplies, you need, you need so many little things. So what you do is you spend that money, or you just write a big check or put it on your credit card for tuition, you send that receipt to Town Hall, and they send you a check. It's a reimbursement.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, I'm going to call your name, and if you would come up, get your certificate, let your parents take your picture, but then stay here, because we're going to have a group picture too. I think I can read them. Kaitlyn Arlata.
Thank you for everything.
Krishani, I'm going to ruin your last name, so I'm just going to say Krishani. Christina Harrington. Kaitlyn Hodgers. It's my niece. Annabelle Jewen. We have representatives here for the kids who are still at college. Can I get to hug you too? Thank you for everything you do. Yes, but take Annabel's, Annalisa's, and Ann Marie's.
Awesome.
Dylan Saunders. Scott Stevens. Oh, you are, okay. Celia Stevens. And Ryan Williams. Does the town council want to come down for a picture with them?
Sure, absolutely.
Yes. Want to put it like right in the middle, kind of?
He would chip down to like...
They all have the wrong certificate.
Hey guys?
Come this way.
They have the wrong ones. Oh, okay. If you would fold them in half so the memo is, is not showing. All right, so now we need the real wide angle. And you guys can turn, turn this way, this way, that's quite good. You guys can do the same thing, turn sideways more.
I wish you would have told me.
You got my permission for now. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And scholarship recipients, we know you're very busy and you're going back to school. You don't have to stay and you don't have to stay, you don't have to feel bad about it. You can take your scholarship and go, it's okay. You're welcome to stay, but you can take it and go.
Thanks for coming. Thanks.
Hey Kelly. Look this way and give me a smile, you got your CAFR report. There you go. Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a comprehensive annual financial report called the CAFR for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2017, and I'm going to pass this off to Marty Sherwood, our financial director.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, as well as all the residents of the town of Southwest Ranches. For the record, my name is Martin Sherwood, your town financial administrator. Tonight, before I formally introduce Bayla Sherman, CPA and Director, who is here from the independent auditing firm of Markham LLP, I am, who's sitting in the audience right now, ready to be called up after a few points by myself, I have a couple PowerPoint slides and will be done. Thank you for your time. I am pleased to provide you all and the residents, the town's comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFR, for the fiscal year ended 2017. This CAFR has been posted to the website, we have extra copies up here by the town clerk's desk, there's some at the front desk available to all parties if they're interested. The town's fiscal year 2017 CAFR is the 11th consecutive CAFR prepared since 2007 and the 12th overall since the town's inception. Specifically, a few financial highlights that I wish to report are, the independent auditor's report, which Bayla will elaborate more on later during her presentation, reflects an unmodified, also known as clean audit opinion, which is the highest assurance given that the town's financial statements were prepared in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. An unmodified audit opinion gives comfort to the town council and the citizens of our community that the town's finances are being maintained and accounted for properly. Second, with, I asked the town clerk to please put up a slide, a CAFR slide on the screen, which is, also represents page 65 of the CAFR or page 97 of 176 of your agenda package. The total changes in all our governmental funds, fund balance, this is all our fund balance comprised of our non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Over to the right-hand side, I have, thank you, for the pointer on the right, you will see on both sides, we've had an increase of $774,681,000. Specifically, of this $774,681,000 of the increase, the unassigned, the unassigned fund balance, otherwise previously known as our reserves, for the general fund increased And that has increased from $2,484,910 to $2,704,947. And I am very happy to report that this occurred even with the financial impact from the effects of Hurricane Irma, which occurred on September 10th, 2017. Accordingly, this increase in unassigned fund balance will allow the general fund to absorb the town's full general fund portion of financial impact from Hurricane Irma that is not reimbursed by either FEMA or the state of Florida. So we have room to absorb the non-reimbursable portion within the general fund. And it is also important to mention that the unassigned general fund balance, this is the $2,704,947, represents 25% of total general fund expenditures and net transfers for 2017. Therefore, the town continues to exceed the minimum unassigned fund balance standard as recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association of up to 16.7%. Thank you for the landscape version for the PowerPoint, so it gives you a better representation of the last column. Thank you. The next point is the town's total government-wide assets. Now this includes all our governmental and enterprise solid waste fund. Next slide, please. This exceeds its liabilities, the assets exceed its liabilities by $54,394,878. And again, I'm giving you PowerPoint, over to the right, you'll see we've had increases over the last six years, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, all the way up to $54,394,878. A significant reason is our capital improvement projects, TISDOR, all the efforts made for improvements throughout the town. Now this analysis is comparable to a balance sheet in the private sector, and we are in a surplus net government-wide position overall. During fiscal year 2017, I would like to congratulate Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and acknowledge all town staff in attendance tonight. So, I'm sorry if I'm going to embarrass you, but I ask you all to please stand up and be recognized. Town staff in attendance. Come on, up, up, up. Town engineer, community service manager, Bob, Robert Code, and even up on the dais, town attorney, executive, and town clerk, assistant town administrator. They once again finished the entire year in a conservative and fiscally responsible manner that created a net positive increase in net position in the total of the governmental funds in the amount of $1,022,260. And this is the seventh consecutive year of a positive increase in the governmental fund type. So congratulations, staff, thank you for your service. Finally, we are also proud to report for the fifth straight fiscal year that the independent auditors report on internal controls, that's page 83 and 84, and a management letter in accordance with the rules of the Auditor General, and compliance with Section 218.415 Florida statutes, identify no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. Now, let me introduce and welcome your next presenter from Markham LLP, Bayla Sherman, whom council has met previously, they've been a longtime external auditor for us and the town, is a CPA and Director in Markham's LLP Assurance Division. She has more than 25 years of experience providing accounting, auditing, and advisory services for a wide range of entities. However, for at least the last 15, her specialty has been primarily municipal governments. Ms. Sherman provides critical guidance to municipal governments ranging from complex accounting issues to general business and accounting developments. She also has significant experience in the evaluation of internal controls. Bayla, please come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And so, I always like to keep that bio short because his, it's usually longer than what I'm going to talk about. Marty has gone through some of the numbers, and as you know, the state requires that all state and local governments have an annual financial audit on a calendar year, or, you know, on the particular year, but it has to be an independent audit. So, that's what Marty's talking about, that we come in here and we audit your financial statements to ensure that they are following the accounting principles for municipal governments. And we had what is called an unmodified or a clean opinion regarding that, which is, again, the highest thing you can have. We are required to... We are required to report on the financial statements, whether it be a CAFR or not. As Marty mentioned, we have to report to the Auditor General as well, and then the Auditor General has also added another report on investments. And are you following your procedures, or are you following the procedures of the state? And you are. So that actually is a good thing, and those are the reports that are at the end. So in the comprehensive annual financial report, you have more than the basic financial statements. In this package, you actually have the basic financial statements. You have something called required supplementary information. The GASB says you need that, even though accounting principles don't say that you need that. The thing with the CAFR is it gives you that additional information and the stat information that Marty was actually giving you there, so that you have a history and you can see a trend as to what's going on. The other thing is, is that the CAFR program goes through a review process, another one. So you actually have another set of independent eyes looking at your financial statements and making sure that they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So in the package that you have, there's something called the MDNA, which is highlighting things, and that on page four, I'm not going to go into those numbers. You have different types of financial reporting measurement focuses. So people say, why does it take so long to get something like this done? But if you have a governmental fund, they're really looking at how you're using your financial resources now and budget to actual, which, you know, municipalities sort of live and die with and have to be balanced in the state of Florida. So those governmental funds have to use that, business type don't. So you have that in here as well. You have one proprietary fund, and you have what's called the full accrual on page 15. You have, this is what a business would look like, picking up all the assets, all the debt, and things of that nature, which the governmental funds don't have. And we then also issue a letter of communication to those charged with governance, and we say whether we had any issues related to the audit in the year, and of course, we did not. That's part of the communication that was given to you in your package. There were no new accounting principles this year. Next year, there's going to be OPEB, and because you don't have a defined benefit plan, you have a defined contribution, so you didn't have to go through all the things that some of the municipalities did regarding the pensions. Well, OPEB is now there, and so OPEB is now going to be requiring, and that's the other benefits, you know, retirement benefits, other benefits that you give to retirees that are not pensions, basically. So healthcare. The state of Florida requires you to provide healthcare or allow people in your plan, but they have to pay for it, which is, in some cases, under collective bargaining, they have to pay for it, and it becomes a big issue. So that is, you're going to see that in next year's CAFR, the implications of that, but other than that, there should be no changes. And as Marty said, you have a very healthy picture there. You have a very strong net position. You know, that's assets deferred outflows, liabilities deferred inflows, and it has this bucket at the bottom, but that's spendable and non-spendable. So when people are looking and saying, can we spend that, it's what do you have in cash? Because that's really what you can spend. And that's about it. That's all I have to say.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any of us have any questions for her?
Okay.
Awesome.
Great to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bayla. Okay, at this time, it is now recommended that the town council introduce, then accept via a motion, the comprehensive annual financial report as audited by our independent external auditors, Markham LLP CPAs for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2017, including the communications to those charged with governance letter dated June 6th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment closed. Any questions up here before we vote? Go ahead, Steve.
I just, I want to make a comment that, you know, we go through a presentation like this, and it's pretty dry and pretty ho-hum and like, okay, good job, but I don't think we realize that the amount of effort and how far we've come from where we used to be. Back in the days when you couldn't make heads nor tails of our financials, back in the days when we were literally fired by our auditor because it was so rough.
It couldn't get in.
All these were before Marty and Andy arrived on the scene. Let me be clear about that. But this doesn't just happen, that's my point, is this doesn't just happen. It happens because there's a dedicated team that is led by these two guys, but the staff that you recognized and all working together. And we are very fortunate to have our, the leadership and the staff in order that recognize how important this is, that put in the hours that it takes to bring these results, so that we can feel good that the dollars that we bring in, that the residents pay in their taxes are all being accounted for and spent in the proper way. So thank you. Thank you very much for all that you've done. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And anybody that wants to have a look at this book, what do we have it at the front desk? Somebody can come in and look at it?
Yes, and we have it on the website as well.
Okay, so it's on the website at the front desk. If anybody's bored and doesn't have anything to do and wants to know where your money goes and where it's spent and what happens to it, feel free to come in and sit in town hall or use one of our rooms and review and look at that book. And beautiful pictures. Awesome. Well, we thank you all very much, and you call the question. That's okay.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So we're going to do quasi-judicial. All right, do I need to open this again and start from scratch, or we can jump into this? Okay.
Would you like me to swear in any witnesses?
Yes, sir.
Or be the resolution first?
Yep.
If there's anyone that's going to appear on this particular item, if you would please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I do.
So this is a waiver of plat. Excuse me, Mayor. Trying to get to the page. Got it. Thanks. This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP 2118, to subdivide approximately 4.85 net acres of property into two lots of 2.85 and 1.999 net acres. Generally located on the south side of Sterling Road, approximately 500 feet east of Hancock Road, legally described as the east one-half of Track 7, less the north 40 feet of the road in Section 3, Township 51. Township 51 South, Range 40 East, Everglades Sugar and Land Company subdivision, as recorded in Plat Book 2, page 39 of the public records of Miami Dade County, Florida. Said lands now lying, being, and situate in Broward County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Mayor of the, you and the council members should dispose any communications you've had with the applicant.
Okay, I've had none.
I've had none.
None?
None.
None.
Okay.
He's down there.
Jeff, I guess you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've got a waiver of plat here. As you can see on the screen, the parcel with the pin in it outlined in yellow, this is a 4.85 acre parcel, and the applicant's proposing to split it into a north parcel and a south parcel. This is the aerial with Sterling Road on the north. And again, we can see where the lot split is proposed. The front lot containing the existing residence would be a 2.85 acre parcel, and the backside would be 1.99 acres. Now, that back parcel can't stand on its own because it doesn't have legal access and it's under 2 acres. This is rural ranches zoning, where 2 acres is the minimum. However, the purpose is that the property owner to the west wants to purchase that back 1.99 acres, and that property owner with the property outlined in red would be adding that 1.99 acres to form a larger parcel, so that you'd have this as a result. And that would be via unity of title with the town as a party, so that this back lot, this 1.99 acres, can never be sold independently of the property to the west. Now, in actuality, the unity of title will tie that back lot to one of those two parcels. There'll still be a parcel that well exceeds minimum requirements, but there was no need to tie all of it together. That's essentially the presentation. We recommend approval, finding that it meets the requirements of the Zoning and Land Development Code, Subject 2. We had a requirement that there was a wooden structure that needed to be demolished within that back parcel, but it's already been taken care of. The petitioner's provided us evidence that it's now gone. Requirement to dedicate an additional 15 feet of right-of-way for Sterling Road. Now, because of that 15 feet, that north parcel will really be about 2.8 acres instead of 2.85, but again, well in excess of the minimum requirement. And some other legal conditions just regarding an executed deed and a unity of title binding that south property to the property on the west, and cost recovery requirement. And that concludes my presentation.
So Jeff, if I can clarify, this is an application dividing these two, but he's selling it off. You explained why.
That's correct.
When is the second half of this joining that parcel going to happen? And how does that happen?
Sure.
And how do we stay in the mix and informed that it does happen?
Good question, Mayor. Every time that you approve a waiver of plat, the approval is just your finding that it meets the requirements and that whatever conditions we recommend or that you add get applied to the application. However, your approval doesn't actually take effect until all the conditions are actually complied with and we record the resolution in the public records. So all of these things have to happen before we record this. And they will happen before we record the resolution.
Now, you all are part of the second half of this process?
Yes.
Okay. And what we approved tonight, is all this together happening? Is that correct?
Well, what you're.
There's separate things, but all the same.
Yeah, it all has to happen as I described it. Otherwise, we would not be recording the resolution, and your approval would expire.
Okay.
It would never take effect.
Any other questions up here? I'm going to go to the public, but I'm just.
No, no, I'm good. Steve?
This is, there's no intent for anything else going in there except single-family dwelling?
That's correct, but I can defer that to the applicant who can give you more information.
Go right ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, my name's Scott Klyman of Kalis, Klyman &amp; Wolf, 7320 Griffin Road in Davie. I represent the petitioner as well as the party who will be acquiring the 1.99 acres. The closing is scheduled for next Friday. We have every intention of getting this done quickly. Complying with the legal requirements is set forth by staff, which includes an update on the opinion of title. Get that completed as quickly as possible, so that your 90 days doesn't even come up. It's going to, our goal is to do this within about two weeks. Councilmember, in response to your question, the purchaser is a professional athlete who does value privacy, and really, that's part of the reason he's acquiring this, is to create a buffer to the east. There is no intention to develop anything on that property. It's intended to be left in as natural state as possible, so there will be no additional development on that piece.
Personal use only?
Personal use only.
No commercial or?
No.
Nothing coming in there? No surprises?
No. He already owns the pieces there. I think he's in the process of redeveloping portions of it into a nicer residence, but he's just looking to create a buffer. At best, and I think he may have said this half jokingly, he may leave it so he can go out and chip golf balls out there, but that's about the extent of his intent of use.
Anyone else up here? All right. If I can let you move aside a minute, I'm going to open it to the public. No questions in the public? All right. Public comment is closed. Back to us.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions that have been laid out.
Second.
Okay. Let's hear a second. No additional questions? Call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We're good with that, right? Nothing else for you? Number seven, public comment.
Yes, Mayor, we have three speakers. First up is Mike Hanley, and then the next two speakers would like to speak together, David Kazinsky and Francis Cordero.
Flag Day. Mike Hanley, 205 Avenue or actually 50th Place. I just have an observation that it seems like our primary road is Griffin Road going through Southwest Ranches. But if you try and go from US 27 to, let's say, the airport, the 95, you're going to get stopped probably in excess of 20 stoplights. I go from US 27, I get stopped at Bonaventure. If I go to the speed limit, I'm going to get stopped at Weston. Then I'm going to get stopped at I-75 going over the top. Then I'm going to get stopped at Volunteer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Just as an observation, I sat, I got to the stoplight just as it changed at Weston, and Weston going south to Dyke. I sat there for 50 seconds while Weston Road made left turns and went straight ahead. And then Griffin Road was allowed to make a left turn in while Griffin Road also made a left turn going south to Dyke and a left turn going north on Weston. Somehow, we've got to address this. I asked Andy about it, and he says he gets stopped all the time. Is there something that we can do to get the Department of Transportation, or Broward County, or whoever is responsible, to rectify this intrusion on our right? It seems like every north-south road has priority over any east-west road. Are we just forced to go up and get on 595 to go east? It seems to me that there should be a petition, maybe put in the Southwest Ranches newspaper for people to sign it. If we went in and asked with 7,900 signatures, asking for somebody to address this issue, would we get some action? Because the individual doesn't seem to get any. They don't seem to care. Is there something that the council could do to make a recommendation to get people to sign a petition when they come into the courthouse, or sign the newspaper and send in a letter? Somehow, we've got to get our citizens concerned, because it's an infringement on our time and energy in our city. We have no communications to go back and forth without going through a million damn stoplights. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. David Kazinsky, 6411 Hollaty Trail.
Francis Cordero, 6511 Rodeo Drive.
All right, Council. First of all, we're here on behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowner Association. Let me begin by saying Happy Flag Day and Happy Birthday, U.S. Army. First issue that I like to talk about is our new signs. Obviously, Council has seen our new signs for our Sunshine Ranches Homeowner Association. The signs that have been constructed, have been constructed on the exact posts that have been there before the town was created. There's no new signs that have been put up. The signs are actually the same dimension. We went through years and years of trying to come up with a design. Finally, we came up with an approval, and then we had some problems with the signs, and our former board member, Ryan Case, actually funded the construction of the new signs, so we give great thanks to Mr. Case. We tried to get it, the approval, but we couldn't come up with a quorum to pass it. So we had the money, just didn't.
So, we had the money, just didn't get a quorum. Uh, next, um, there was an issue, uh, we came up with at our last meeting about the Southwest Ranches scholarship. At our next meeting, I'm gonna push really hard to try to get a quorum there so we can, um, I'm gonna propose we make a thousand dollar contribution to the scholarship fund from, uh, our Homeowners Association Fund. Last, um, our newest, one of our newest board members, Francis, came up with an issue of bringing back the parade. And we were thinking, well, the summer months are a little bit too hot, so maybe we can do something with around Thanksgiving. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Francis and let her, um, give her ideas and what she's gonna ask.
Hi. Uh, in one of our meetings, we had some members, um, we asked them what do they wanna see, um, in the town and they, it was a consensus. Everybody wanted the parade back. Um, I did some research, I've been asking questions. I wanna create lots of buzz around this to see if we can, um, bring it back. It's, uh, this is a very tight-knit community and I think it would only increase, uh, participation in, like, throughout the entire community if we have the parade. Um, moving it from July to maybe November, we were, you know, one of the things that came up was hopefully having it maybe a Southwest Ranches Thanksgiving Day Parade. Uh, it would, school would be in session, we can get the schools in the area, we can get the sports team out there, we can get dance teams, different teams out there, we can even get the Boy Scouts, um, to participate along with exotic cars, the equestrian, um, groups, you know, we can do, get, do a lot of different things. So, two things we wanna do, um, one, we wanna ask for assistance in order to get the, um, be able to execute this, and the second thing is for funds in order to also be able to execute this. Did I cover it all?
That's it.
All right.
Um, I don't, I don't know that we can't give some feedback here. What's your thoughts? Anybody wanna give some feedback on this one at all?
I was gonna do during council comments, but, uh-
Um, okay. Anyhow, um-
It's ideas.
It's, 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 it's an idea, it's a great idea. I've talked to a lot of people about it over the years and it'll be exciting, but we've gotta come out with a rouse, technicality, police are involved, the whole deal, so, uh, like the idea.
And by the way, it will not be just Sunshine Ranches doing this. We will be-
Townwide.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be-
We get it.
Yeah, so just wanna make sure.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any additional public comment?
That's it, Mayor.
That's it. Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. Is that, well, let me ask you, has anybody else that wanted, uh, wanna talk that didn't sign up would like to say anything? Okay, 'cause we don't, if you bother to come out and you think you wanna say something, we welcome you. So, I just wanted, you can fill out the paperwork after the fact if need be. But, um, okay, well, public comment is closed. We got a board report. Any board reports for anyone? See no board reports? Board reports is, uh, closed. So, legal com, no, uh, board, council member comments?
I'll go.
Okay. You're up, Steve.
All right. Um, a number of things I wanted to touch on. First of all, I'll, uh, just give my comments on the parade, um, and that is that I'm excited that it is, uh, there's some energy and some excitement and some ideas behind it again. It was a great event, but it's a huge undertaking.
Lot of work.
It's a lot of work, so, um, but I know you already know that. So, um, I certainly would support the town assisting as we can, um, uh, but with knowing that the majority of the work is gonna fall on the volunteers that all, that all pull together. But, uh, I think anything that we can do to kinda smooth the weeds, the way along and, um, and, you know, let's keep working back and forth and it's a great idea. It's exciting. It's exciting because it's a, it, it was one of our biggest events, one of our first events, and it would be great to see it come back again. So, great. Thank you. Um, the synchronized lights on Griffin, um, I will, uh, uh, commit to making, uh, contact with Broward County, see what we can do. I can't make any promises, obviously, but, uh, we'll have a conversation and I'll provide some feedback on what I hear. And let's see what heckens, see what we, see what can, uh, make happen. Um, couple other things. Um, one is, I think that, uh, I'm hearing more, you know, now the economy is picking up, there's more stuff going on. Um, I think a lot of properties are being fixed up and, um, I'm hearing a little bit more about, um, people coming in for, uh, smaller things like, uh, replacing a fence, things like that, and being required to do major engineering to, um, to, to make it happen. And I'd like to, Andy, just, uh, we need, I think we need to revisit that. Uh, I know we've had that issue in the past and I believe the council gave direction that we should only be requiring that when it's truly needed. Um, it shouldn't just be a, a, you know, kind of a, a rubber stamp, yeah, you're gonna need that as well. Um, because it really, what it does is it dismotivates residents to do the right thing. And, um, if we need it, we need it. Don't get me wrong. If we need it, we need it, but a lot of times it's a judgment call and, um, we wanna make sure that, uh, we're working in the favor of getting things done the right way, so. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to touch on is frankly more of a, a personal item, but I, I felt like I needed to, needed to bring it up. Um, many, many years ago, uh, before I even lived in this town, which was many, many years ago, uh, probably about 30 years ago this happened, um, I actually lived in Plantation and there was a guy that, uh, had a small, um, uh, photography shop right down my road. And so, our kids were just being born and we got to know this guy, he took some pictures and things like that, a really good guy. And, uh, he was active in politics in the town of South, in the town of Plantation. And he would run for office every year and, or every, every go-round, and he would lose every go-round. But man, the guy was persistent. And he went, and I mean, I saw him lose, I think, three elections. And then he was out there the fourth election, um, after we had already moved to Southwest Ranches. Um, he was out there for a fourth election and the guy won, like his fourth time around. And, um, his name is Jerry Fagin.
Oh, man.
And, um, so I've known Jerry for a very long time, as a personal photographer first and then giving him the thumbs up when he was running for office. And he was, to me, he was the epitome of a guy who ran for office for all the right reasons. He ran for office because he truly wanted to make his town better. And, um, and his persistence paid off and he did as great a job when he was in office as he promised to do when he was running for all those years and all those defeats. So, um, unfortunately, uh, in the last several weeks, Jerry passed away. And I just wanted to note that here and I wanted to put a personal touch on it because he was an exceptional individual, um, a great man and a great servant for his community. So, I just wanted to touch on that. Thank you.
Yeah, he, he was and, uh, I know a lot of, quite a few people that knew him. I'd met him on a few occasions, but, uh, he, he died in a freak accident and fell off his ladder trimming a tree. Um, so that just tells you, when you get o- older up in your years, you don't have quite the balance you normally have, don't be climbing up on the ladder. I think about every time I go to climb up, oh, one, bad idea. So, uh, who's next? Dee, you gonna do next for MPO?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Um, I'd, I'd also like to, uh, piggyback on what, uh, Steve brought up about the, uh, parade. Great idea. Um, it's, it's probably long overdue. I can remember the first one and I can remember the last one we had. I was involved in it, as was Vinnie, Ruth, all of us. And it was wonderful. There wasn't anybody that didn't enjoy it, from the kids to the dogs that were sitting on the, the golf carts or whatever you had and the decorations. So, we welcome that and I think your biggest challenge is to go to all the different HOAs and get them to get on board and see what you can, you can build off of that. That, that probably would be your first start, but I think it's a great idea. Good luck. Um, second, I, I attended the MPO, uh-
Today.
Today. Thank you. Today. Um, and I, and I have some news for some of the veterans. My understanding is that SunPass and the E-Pass, all the passes-
Easy Pass.
Easy Passes is going to be giving the veterans a pass, a free pass. You must have, I believe it is, and don't quote me on it, but I think it's like a 10% battle disability is what they, they called it. But if you have this and you meet the requirements, you don't have to pay to go on the turnpike or anything else. You get to ride for free. So I thought that was kinda nice. Uh, the second thing is, uh, and I, and I will mention the gentleman's name in a minute. Uh, we had an issue with park and ride here. Everybody's favorite, thinking, oh, park and ride is coming here. Uh, and the light that they wanted to install on Griffin Road, well, guess what? It was voted down unanimously. So it will go to DOT-
Let me, let me jump in with you. For the second time.
For the second time. Well, the light was new, but not the park and ride. But it was voted down unanimously and no other than the vice chair, Brian Colletta, needs just accolades for championing this. He also is a, uh, what's his position with Davie? He's the, uh-
Vice Mayor.
He's the vice mayor of Davie. So, with a lot of his help and convincing and talking to people, um, like I said, it was unanimous, so it's gone. Gone away again. We don't know if it will rear its ugly head like any snake, but, but right now it is gone, so I'm, I'm really happy to, um, to tell you about that. Um, I think that's it. That's all I've got.
That's good.
That was enough.
That was enough.
Freddie, anything for you?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
Gary?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Squire.
Yes.
Few announcements to make. Uh, first off, Dee, thank you for attending the MPO and thank you for all that really good information, but-
Hey, it's fun. We're gonna let you find out next year.
Sure.
Get ready.
Hey, unfortunately, you're in for four.
Not four years on the MPO.
Yes.
So it's very interesting, I will tell you. I've learned a lot and, and, and it's very interesting.
Checked in there for four years.
So you will like it, Gary. I promise you.
Thank you for your efforts. It is duly appreciated and duly noted. Uh, you know, I just wanna make a comment on the parade, uh, having been involved in all of them. Uh, they're a lot of fun and the community enjoys it. Uh, and, and my colleagues were correct, it is a lot of work. And, uh, like you said, I, we suspect you know that, but it's a lot of fun and it's a worthwhile endeavor. So, whatever we can do up here to support you, please let us know. And particularly let Andy know, so, all right? Uh, just a few announcements, uh, coming up, um, this month, uh, the summer solstice next week, I believe, or the week after, I'm sorry, the 21st, sunset in, in the park, the saddles, a lot of fun. Uh, December puts on a nice little show there. Um, we have the Flowmobile on the 28th, which is the next council meeting from 10 to 2:00 PM here at Town Hall. Uh, and that's if you have any, uh, DMV questions or renewals or, uh, driver's license issues, uh, you can bring it up then. Uh, we have a, uh, ham radio event on the 23rd in, uh, Equestrian Park. It's an all-day affair. Uh, you, you, they'll be setting up mobile communications, uh, and be broadcasting and receiving from all around the world, so it's kind of interesting to see how they do that. On the 4th of July, Town Hall will be closed. It's a Wednesday. Uh, just wanna make mention of that. And on the 14th, we have, uh, Hazmat in the park, uh, from 10 to 2. And, uh, Andy, correct me, but the shredding component will be there at that. It's at the barn, uh, in Rolling Oaks and I urge everybody to, uh, uh, you know, participate if you've saved up any tires or saved up any used motor oil, now that battery is a good place to bring it. Uh, you know, I know I have a warehouse full of it for the last month or two. Um, anyway, but I just wanted to mention that and, uh, that's about all I got, Mayor.
Awesome. Well, I'd like to say, uh, kudos and thank you very much to, uh, Brian Colletta, Vice Mayor Davie, for, uh, spearheading this, uh, park and ride, traffic lights, the ramps. I don't know if you all, I know a lot of you knew about the park and ride and it had gone away and we got rid of it. Well, FDOT decided they wanna attempt it again and bring it back, but they were still moving forward with the ramps coming up the traffic lights like it did a dozen Pines Boulevard and we said we don't want any of that. And matter of fact, we'd like you to take out the light you did put in and put that ramp back in, but I don't think that's gonna happen. But anyhow, just the fact that, uh, the other thing is stopped for now, uh, is great. And we're gonna keep our eyes and ears to the pavement and, uh, make sure it doesn't rear its ugly head again because, uh, we clearly don't want a Davie and, uh, so unanimous and on board with that together. It's gone so far as that Davie has, uh, made a motion that if they wanted to sell that excess property out there where they were gonna put the park and ride, that Davie would buy it to make sure it doesn't ever show up again. So, um, anyhow, I wanna thank everyone for coming out, greatly appreciated. It's nice to see everybody. The parade's a, uh, no-brainer to us. Uh, we'll be there and contribute or help out however we can. Uh, but as you've heard from each and every one, it is a lot of work and it's not just you, it's a team effort with different people. And I'll tell you, from the people that have the wagons to create the hay wagons, the hay rides, build things on them, whatever it is, whatever your tractor you're gonna use to tow it or customize piece of equipment, I mean, it's a lot of fun, but a lot of work. So, I think between now and, I think the thought of doing it in November, maybe over Thanksgiving time, is probably another great idea 'cause it's a whole lot cooler. Um, but, uh, I think you'll have barely enough time to pull it off from now to then, just maybe a smaller scale version of it, but with the years planning, you have a whole lot of time to get things done more and thinking about it and everything. And then I think you, we need to get with, uh, Andy and the Davie police to find out where the best area to stage from and to end up, so, and it's gonna take a little additional police, I'm sure, and whatnot to, to do this, so, uh, anyhow, whatever, whatever assistance you need from us, but I think half the idea is where to run from and where to end, you know, staging and whatnot. So, other than that, I'm, uh, I'm good with my comments. So, legal, Tom Brady's filling in for Keith Polikoff, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. It's always a great pleasure for me to come out and experience the hospitality of Southwest Ranches and I, I really thank you for it.
Awesome. Greatly, greatly. Uh, Andy?
It's always a much briefer report when Jim's here pinching in, uh, pinch hitting.
[laughing]
Yeah, I have a few things, Mayor. Uh, just, uh, let me start out with a bit of good news. Uh, as you all know, we contract with the town of Davie for fire and EMS services and Assistant Chief Rudy Napolitano's in the back and I wanna congratulate him and the rest of the Davie department. They were named the State of Florida EMS Provider of the Year.
Awesome.
I congratulate Rudy and the rest of the team and thank you for working as closely as you do with our volunteers, so I wanna thank you for that. Uh, while I'm on fire, just wanna touch base with you all. I mentioned this to you all individually, we are applying for a grant for a generator for the new modular station that we're in the process of putting in. If we're successful in getting that, it's a 25% town match, but it'll be just great to help secure that, that, that building and that property going forward.
What's the timeline on the, uh, completion of what we're doing right now out there?
Uh, I, I-
An idea?
I'm gonna take a guess and tell you it's probably the next 20 to 25 days. I think we should be in pretty good shape and yes-
You do have the engineer here.
But they're, they're nodding their head favorably, so, uh-
Okay.
I was, I'm on track.
Okay, cool.
Okay, just wanna make you aware of that. Uh, Councilmember Schroeder, I wanna thank you for the MPO. Just wanna let you know, I'll go through the information you got me, that information on the veterans' SunPass and Easy Pass, we'll track that down, we'll make that available to the residents, so thank you for bringing that back. Uh, oh, uh, two other things. One is, we're, one of the issues we're having is, is in town that we're trying to deal with is swale damage and, and damages that have been done from, from debris collections, from previous bulk collectors, from, now we've changed contracts, we have a new collector that's out there, uh, in, in, certainly in the interim, we had three months of hurricane debris cleanup. months of hurricane debris cleanup. So, Sandy Luongo has prepared a memo that kinda outlines some of the challenges. I'm looking for some input from council. If necessary, we can schedule this for a future discussion item. But before you all leave tonight, I wanna give you a copy of that memo, let you have a chance to read through it. It's got some photos and gives you an outline on, on some of the challenges we're facing and how we deal with those, the canal side, bulk pickup, those kinds of things. So, we're looking for some input from council from a policy standpoint, how you want us to address those going forward. And, and Mayor, just to close it out on a, on a very somber note, I was in touch with many of you just a week ago tonight. The town tragically lost a very young resident, a 27-year-old Lance Warren. Just horrible, horrible circumstances. My, my heart goes out to his family, and I just, if we could, just a moment of silence and observance of Lance, I would, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Good idea.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay. Dee, you had something else?
I just would hope that everybody keep Laura Warren and her family in your prayers because this family is going to go through some pretty rough times. So, it would be important, and I know it would be probably extremely greatly appreciated just to keep her in your prayers. Thank you.
Okie dokie. Let's see.
Number 12.
Number 12. Russell?
Mayor, this is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a continuing services agreement with All Web's Enterprises, Inc. for the installation, testing, and repair of the town's fire protection water wells, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into the agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seen no public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to us. Any discussion on this matter? Seen none. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
He stepped out.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, item 13.
Yep. Item 13. Cancelation of Town Utility Vehicle Purchase. Okay. Let me, I asked this to be added for a couple of reasons. We ordered a, a new vehicle, and it's been over three months ago, and we don't have it yet, and not real pleased about it. So, I asked them to add this item on the agenda for discussion item. But since then, since we've done that, we have an update from the people that are handling this. So, Russell, if you'd give us the update?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Basically, we, we involved the regional sales manager for, for Dodge via Chrysler on the tardy delivery of the vehicle. They explained that there was a railcar shortage among other issues, that the vehicle had been built but was sitting in Michigan waiting to be delivered. After numerous attempts, we finally got word yesterday that the vehicle will be delivered by, on or before June 23rd.
So, what I would like to do, if I could, is I'd like this item to stay on the agenda for next meeting, just in case that truck doesn't show up. So...
So, we make a motion for it to stand?
I don't, it's a discussion item, but I mean, I think we're good. But anyhow, I, I'm gonna address it differently if it's not here. So, it's...
Andy's gonna miss that meeting. I heard him say that.
Okay. Number 14, approval in minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any public comments? You've corrected our minutes before. Seen none? Public comment is closed. Back to us. Any corrections at our end, or...Okay. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
He's out.
I'm sorry. Keep doing...
Sorry. Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. That's for both, by the way. You want a clarification, May 20, May 10th and 24th?
Correct.
That was for?
Oh, I thought it was for one.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. We're good. Thank you all for coming out. Feel free to visit and socialize.
Can you do me a favor? Can you bring this to Keith as well?